I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for Thursday, January 30th, 2025. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Abshar.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Gracious God, as we come before you today to discuss important matters, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding, therefore, we seek your direction in our decision-making process. Help you to listen attentively to one another with open hearts and minds. May we not be quick to judge or criticize, but instead seek to understand different perspectives. We pray that you will give in the discernment to make the best decisions for the greater good of our parish. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Abshar. Roll call, please, Ms. Wallace.
Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pong?
Here.
Mr. Barti?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Ms. Heaton?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Here.
Mr. Haynes?
Here.
Mr. Landry has not arrived. Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markantell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Here.
President Barris?
Here.
Do you have a call?
Thank you. Item 1A, appearance by the Honorable Cade O'Call Tax Court Judge, candidate for Louisiana Supreme Court.
Mr. President, members of the jury, thank you for having me today as I talk about my candidacy for the Louisiana Supreme Court. This is a big area. It starts in Shreveport, and I've had to be in Shreveport, Mansfield, Natchitoches, Eunice, and everywhere in between, but it's great to be here, home. As you all know, I'm born and raised in Dequincy. I was the attorney for Vinton and Sulfur, and my wife and my four children and I live in Lake Charles. So it's great to be home, working on this, working on this race, the Supreme Court. We haven't had the opportunity to have a Supreme Court Justice from Lake Charles in a long time because generally, we were in a district with Lafayette that got bigger than us. Due to recent redistricting and the changes in how the district works, they have their own district, and we got this district, which goes up to Shreveport, but covers everything along 171 and kind of 190 over to Eunice. So I have been all over. The anchors of my campaign are defending our constitution and protecting our families. The latter is very important to me, and I'm very appreciative, as I've gone all over these parishes, to have the endorsement of every law enforcement leader, sheriffs, DAs, chiefs of police, Democrat, Republican, from all over the district. And I think keeping us, keeping us safe is important. The Supreme Court is, of course, the final arbiter of our civil and criminal law. But one of the things I'm most excited about for Calhoun Parish, and I will only be the second judge elected to the Supreme Court from Calhoun Parish in 100 years, if I'm fortunate enough to get elected on March the 29th, or hopefully tomorrow if no one runs. They haven't yet. Fingers crossed. But it's a great opportunity because the Supreme Court administers hundreds of millions of dollars of the judiciary's programs and resources and staff. And the Drug Court programs, the Veterans Court programs, things that are very important to providing services to the people we all serve and trying to help people out. You know, whenever they maybe made a mistake, but they have an opportunity to get on the right track. All those, all those programs are funded and allocated by the Supreme Court. And so I am excited to have the opportunity to bring this seat home to Calhoun Parish. And I've enjoyed getting out and running, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. But otherwise, thank y'all very much for everything you do and for everything y'all do running our parish. Thank you very much.
Good luck, sir.
Good luck.
Make us proud. Item 1B, presentation of certificates to members of Ward 1 Fire Protection District Number 1 for heroic actions in the line of duty. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Quinn. He'll pop up right over there.
Mr. President, I have Chief Trahan here. He's gonna kind of tell everybody what went on, give us a little synopsis of the event. Chief Trahan?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hold the mic.
On the night of October 23rd, 2024, Ward 1 Fire Department personnel were dispatched to a residential fire with an occupant still inside and unable to exit. Upon the arrival of MB 290, CPSO was on scene, and mutual aid from Westlake and Lake Charles Fire Departments was requested due to visible smoke and flames exiting the structure. Lieutenant Edwin Patrick and firefighter operator Thomas Ladue were assigned to MB 290. Firefighter Ladue immediately began deploying a hand line to the front door while Lieutenant Patrick entered the residence to observe fire conditions and possibly locate the female occupant. MB 315 arrived on scene and firefighter operator Brian Gary donned his personal protective equipment to team up with Lieutenant Patrick inside the residence and assist with interior operations. As these actions were taking place, MB 201 arrived on scene with Captain Brandon Landry and firefighter operator Juan Vaughn. Captain Landry assumed command of the scene, and upon reaching the charlie side of the structure, observed heavy fire conditions on a rear porch area, along with a portion of the, of the mobile home itself involved. He then deployed a hose line and began an offensive attack on the fire, which was quickly brought under control. Firefighter operator Juan Vaughn was initially assigned to assist firefighter operator Ladue with establishing water supply at a nearby hydrant, and then report to the residence to assist with operations. Firefighter operator Gary, while conducting a search of the opposite end of the mobile home, which had heavy smoke conditions, was able to successfully locate the semi-conscious female in a bedroom and remove her from the structure through the front door. She was handed off to a Calhoun Parish Sheriff Officer who was near the front door, who then turned her over to the Acadian Ambulance Crew that was on scene. Due to teamwork and quick actions of the crew at this incident, the female occupant of the residence was successfully rescued and returned to Moss Bluff to live with a family a few days later. It is my honor as Fire Chief of the Ward 1 Fire Department to serve these gentlemen as their chief along with the citizens of Ward 1 that we bravely serve. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So as a representative for Ward 1 from Moss Bluff, for the jury, I just want to say thank you to you guys. I know, I know the work you put in. I know the training it takes. I know the time it takes. So I just want to know on behalf of all of us in Moss Bluff and all of us in Calhoun Parish, we appreciate what you do, and we want to thank you for that. The fact that we can be here today and that lady is safe, that it's directly because of your actions. And we just want to say thank you, and I will continue doing whatever I can to help you guys to move forward with whatever we need as far as equipment and other things as we move forward. So just thank you so much for what you do. Also want to mention, for those of you that, or that may be out there that want to become members of this, this fine team in Ward 1, we are looking for volunteers. We will, we will speak to you. We will train you, and we will, you can help us to keep everyone safe. So I just want to, again, thank you guys, and we have certificates. And I'll read the first one. They're all the same. So certificate of recognition presented by the Calhoun Parish Police Jury on this day, the 30th day of January 2025, to firefighter operator Brian Gary, Ward 1 Fire Protection District Number 1, in recognition and commendation of his heroic actions in the line of duty on October 23rd, 2024. Thank you for your outstanding service. Captain Brandon Landry? Oh, I think I may have handed three or four up. First time, my first time doing this. All right, firefighter operator Thomas. And firefighter operator Juan Vaughn. So you want to do pictures up here? So Chief, if we could get the guys up here with the pictures with the Mr. President.
Pick a Westlake and Ram, all that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Item 1C, recognition of staff of the police jury for their work during winter storm Enzo. I just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize a lot of folks who went over and above during the winter storm. It was rare, and it was stuff that we don't really work in a lot, but these, this, this team shined. Many of those employees across all departments went above and beyond the call of duty to serve our community in the days before the temperature dipped. OEP coordinated with local, state, and private entities to ensure a coordinated response before, during, and after the event. Engineering and Public Works planned for road and bridge issues, performed sanding and plowing operations, and were contacted by State DOTD to assist with their bridges. Engineering went old school and used a whiteboard when their cartograph software failed. Employees that oversee our waterworks operations educated customers on ways to protect infrastructure and worked 24/7 to ensure that our waterworks facilities were taken care of and running, which they accomplished. Facilities employees worked before and after to ensure all parish buildings were weatherized prior to the snow and conducted inspections every day to oversee system failures, any system failures or concerns that would not allow us to open to the public. Finance and payroll worked through the weekend to deliver employee payroll deposits on time and handle departmental purchasing requests that were related to the storm. Public Health Services joined with other local jurisdictions and agencies to open warming centers. And Human Resources secured parish employee volunteers to help staff these centers when needed. Mosquito Control moved all their chemicals into heated locations to keep them from spoiling in the freeze and protected all of their assets. Animal Services, along with employees from Facilities and Public Works, made sure the animals were sheltered from the weather and cared for. Office of Juvenile Justice, along with other departments, worked multiple consecutive shifts when travel conditions did not allow other employees to travel to work safely. IT worked to restore internet and parish computing systems. Through it all, our communications and media team stayed in touch with all departments to not only document what we were, we are highlighting tonight, but also to ensure that we stayed in contact internally with other key entities, and most importantly, with the residents of the parish. Winter storm Enzo is not the kind of weather we're used to by any means, so I want to commend our employees on their success. With all the work and preparation, a lot of it occurred before the event even began, and then it snowed. The wind blew and it froze. Our team didn't freeze. They jumped to work and carried out the work that they prepared for and executed their plans in excellent fashion. So with that, I would like to extend a very heartfelt thank you to all the employees. I know some, some weren't able to make it tonight, but to all the employees for what you did and for what you continue to do for our parish. Mr. Bean? I was gonna open the floor up if anybody had anything to echo.
I'd just like to say it's not only during a major thing like that, storm. I periodically talk to jurors. I'm not gonna name the parishes. A few of them. They would give a lot of money to have our staff and our workers, I can assure you. I see our workers out every day. When I see them, I stop them. I tell them they doing a good job. They're very professional. They're efficient. They like their job. And so, I mean, if you see them out there, please stop and recognize them. They do a great job. Our water districts, I know some stayed at the water districts 30, 36 hours, getting a nap here and there just to keep the water flowing. The volunteer, our fire district stayed fighting fires. Some of them fought fires during that freeze. So I'd just like to say that, you know, I appreciate everybody every day. So thank y'all a lot.
Mr. Andrew Pong?
To echo what Mr. Markantell said, you know, and I know I speak for all of us when we see that along with staff. And I've shared this with our Public Works Department when I was at Christmas lunch at Ward 4. It makes us proud when we see red trucks out on the road everywhere, and on day-to-day, day-to-day operations. You see them out here 24 hours before a hurricane, and what are they doing? They're hauling sand. This obviously is an unusual weather event, but throughout the year, whether it's hurricanes or snow events or ice events or what have you, really, Calhoun Parish, and it's the folks that represent our parish in the trenches that make it happen. It truly makes this parish a shining star. And I'm very proud when I see everyone, because it takes everyone, and they make our jobs easy. So a big thank you to all of you.
Well, with that, okay, Mr. Bean?
Excuse me, Mr. President. It means a lot to these ladies and gentlemen that are here tonight and the ones that couldn't be here to hear y'all say this directly. And I just want to echo the same thing from the administration. And y'all know this, but it needs to be said, how much you prepare, all these departments prepare year-round for their role in these situations. But as you know, we don't get the same disaster twice. And so it's always the stories about what happened, even though you're prepared, that we didn't know was gonna happen. And the, not, not just the commitment, but the creativity and just being willing to do something. A few examples, in the warming centers, which the, the two entities that primarily worked on those, Waters Edge and SC3 over in Sulfur, did a great job, but we hit capacity quick because word got out all the way to Opelousas that we had a warming center. Now, who would have thought we'd have had a problem with capacity because Opelousas came? And by the way, everybody got snow, but nobody saw that. So another shelter was open. They had to help, help some people in Vinton. A lot of cooperation. We had some special issues come up over there. The town of Iowa lost water to everybody briefly. As it turns out, I think they found, they discovered what the problem was. It was an electrical short, but that was major. Terry Freelo was literally on his way over to Iowa to help with that when they discovered it. I, I could tell you a lot of other ones, and it just, it's, it's that intangible. And also, he hates when I do this. I'm gonna pat Dane on the back. Y'all, how much you know it, Jared Mays could tell you all about it, but in the, in the, in the emergency management field, it's a federal thing. It's called ESF. ESF1 for this, and, you know, it's all these categories. I think there's 16 of them. I think we utilized all of them. Somebody has got to be coordinating all of that at a high level, and that was Dane Bowlen. And usually, the things that I'm telling you about that we said, this is what happened, we didn't know, he was on top of it. He spoke with most of y'all, was in touch with President Barris the whole time, spoke to outside folks, state folks. He was just outstanding in this, and I just want to say that because he's not gonna say it. Y'all know it, but I want the public to know it. He was, he did a masterful job in this. And the citizens who I've heard from directly, y'all have, they know. And that matters the world to me and to y'all. And so I just want to thank y'all on behalf of staff for recognizing them, because they do great work. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bean.
I would just, just add to that and say that I appreciate all of the posts. It looked like they were having a great time while they were, while they were doing the job. But I know they worked long hours, but I really appreciate the positivity, and I think that does positively affect the community and our residents when they feel like it's being taken care of and they're in good hands and the guys are having fun doing it. So, but the whiteboard was my favorite. I understand that.
I mean, with that being said, you can go home. You're not gonna be penalized if you get up and leave. I'm serious. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you. Some of them is Friday, you know?
And it's raining.
You ain't gonna sit there and listen to me.
We can go?
No. All right, moving right along. Item 2A, approve applications for liquor and beer permits. We got a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion? Any questions? Item carries. Staff recommends approval of one new and nine renewal applications. Item 2B, adopt an ordinance approving the following rezoning application. 131 South Goodman Road in Ward 3 to rezone from mixed residential to light industrial to allow industrial development. I've got a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any question? Any discussion? Item carries. Item 2C.
Move to deny request for rezoning.
Adopt an ordinance approving the following rezoning application. 1124 Dun Ferry Road in Ward 6 to rezone from agricultural to light industrial to allow industrial development. We got a motion to deny. To deny.
Yes.
By Mr. Markantell and a second by Mr. Andrew Pong. I have two blue cards. So each speaker will come up. You'll have three minutes. And of course, if any jurors have any questions, you can stay to answer that. Let's see, our first person is Norman Simmons Jr. Just come up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. My name's Norman Simmons Jr. I own CD&amp;M Mobile Home Movers. I live at 175 Huppfire Road, Raglin, Louisiana. And I bought some land on Dun Ferry Road. I was born and raised in Moss Bluff. But anyway, I bought the land. All I'm trying to do is get one acre where our shop was, where there's always been some kind of, it's an old, old building. And every time I try to improve it, the more I improve it, I filled in ponds, I tore down old houses, I've hauled mobile homes out of there that was there before I got there. There was another guy there before me named Josh Reed. Had a stack of papers on his front door to the house about this thick from y'all. I'm not cleaning the property. And anyway, I've done everything in my power to get this place up as nice as I possibly can. And anyway, I just want to tell y'all, you know, all I'm gonna do is improve it, but you know what I mean? I can't keep improving something that I can't use. And I keep everything inside the shop, which I want to paint the old shop because it's ugly. It's already got a six-foot hurricane fence all the way around the property, around that part of the property. I got almost four acres there, but I'm only zoning, like, I think it's I got almost four acres there, but I'm only zoning, like, I think it's an acre. But anyway, I just want y'all to know, I'm just trying to, I mean, the place ain't never looked this good in ten years.
Okay, we got a, Mr. Gilery.
By any chance, you didn't bring any pictures of recent?
Yes, sir.
Here we go, here we go.
Okay, they're on the screen, they're on the screen.
See, that's enough. If you could go back one picture, right there, that right there, it's the only thing that's outside of that shop, is the hitches that you see right there? Because if I put them in the shop, they would, you know, I wouldn't have no room in the shop. I don't keep none of my trucking, big trucks there. I just, every once, I got the hitches in the back, which that's in the south-northeast corner, you can't even see from the roof. And anyway, in the building, I need to put another door in the front of it, and I'm trying to, I just keep, every time I do something, somebody, you know, I don't know, I mean, I've spent tons of money on the property. I think I paid eighty for it, right around eighty, or maybe a little more? And anyway, I probably got another, I'm not over the value of the land, I just want to say that.
Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you recently acquired the property, if I understand you correctly?
Yes, sir, I think I've been having it over about a year or two.
Okay. When you purchased this property, what was your intention?
Well, honestly, I automatically thought it was commercial because that building was there, and they had the big, big concrete things with the, like, some big circle, I think they used them for, to dry rice out or soybeans, you know what I mean?
So, the lay-down yard, or whatever you want to do here?
Yes, sir.
That's been your intention from the beginning, that's the reason you bought the property?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay. So, you bought the property, but you didn't know how it was zoned?
No, sir, I didn't. And it's out in the middle of the woods, and I talked to all my neighbors on both sides of me, all the way down, and they're all fine with it. You know what I mean?
Unfortunately, it's a little more complicated than that. Yeah, that, what we're doing tonight should've been done before you bought the property. It should, you know, the sale should've been based off of the outcome of the zoning. That would've protected you from being in this situation.
Well, if you look at the situation right here, behind me is nothing but woods, that, you know, they grow trees. Right across the street from me is a man that owns all that land, he's got one barn. And I ain't trying to, I mean, like, all the rest of the land, I'm leaving it whatever it is, you know what I mean? I ain't trying to zone the whole, almost four acres.
Right, right, all right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Mark.
Let me just add, Mr. President, this piece of property has been brought from the jury before to be rezoned and was denied at a previous time.
May I ask what happened, why, why it was denied?
But it was denied by the police jury.
I mean, I got nobody going against me but one person, and they don't even live on my road. And I had to talk to them after the meeting the other night we had here, when they passed me. Anyway, we had a meeting here, and I talked to the people out there, you know, and I gave them my phone numbers and anything, and I said, if you have any kind of problems, you know what I mean, I'd be more than glad, just to address me, call me?
Sure.
And I'd be jumping right on it.
Okay, so, thank you. We're gonna call our next blue card, Mr. Rodney Johnson. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Rodney Johnson, 1787 Bill Pruitt Road, probably half a mile up the road from the site. My concerns have never changed, and I appreciate your taking the, you know, letting me have the opportunity to talk about this. It had been declined previously, there was a mobile home rehabilitating going on, it looked like the hurricanes had tore up mobile homes, they were bringing them out there, and they were a mess, and they were tearing them apart, putting them back together, I don't know where they went with them after that, but it was, I believe, that was one of the reasons that it was shut down, because they weren't gonna allow that type of business in that area, that was, I don't know that, but I think that's what the case was. Everything in the area, as far as square miles, is zoned ag and timber and residential, and it's a big jump to go for a little four acre piece of property in the middle of that, in my opinion, to industrial, which industrial opens up the window to all commercial applications, plus, you know, used tire, you know, recycling and that type of thing, so, which kind of leads me to my next question. Anybody that's gonna, you know, acquire the property at some point in the future, after this has been rezoned, what is their ability to come and make a request to set up a tire recycling business, or a furniture manufacturing, staining, painting type of a business in there now that it's zoned for that use? They would come to the police jury and they would say, it's zoned for that purpose. Why would I not be able to open a business that it's zoned for? And it's, so, to me, the zoning doesn't necessarily fit that area. And I don't know what the police jury's ability is to deny a business that is making a request that's within the zoning. I would think they would be able to do that, that's my experience in the past. The last point I would like to make is, there's a lot of property out there that's undeveloped. The, right behind the property is all timber that's all been harvested, probably three hundred acres, I'm guessing, of timber that's all been harvested. I would expect somebody to be here at the podium requesting something with that piece of property, unless all they're gonna do is replant trees again. If I owned it, I'd want to do residential subdivision of some sort, again, then you've got an industrial spot in a place that doesn't necessarily fit without a specific purpose, that would suit residential, or multifamily, or something to that. That's typically what I've seen is agriculture to residential, and then on Highway 171.
Correct.
You've got a lot of commercial stuff in a setup for that kind of type of thing. The last thing is, when you set a precedent of approving an industrial piece of property right there in that spot, the neighbor comes in and says, why can't I have it?
Thank you.
Why do I not get industrial?
Understood, thank you, sir.
And then we're opening up, you know, another avenue of infrastructure setup for that and a whole.
That's right, your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Those are my concerns, thank you.
All right, any, Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Crane, did you got, what's your staff recommend? Did you have a recommendation?
Yes, sir, we recommended to deny.
Okay, because it's, what was that based on?
Yeah, some of the same sentiments there, is that if you look at the zoning map, predomin, most of this area is predominantly zoned agricultural, A1. And so, if you do zone it A1, it could set a precedent, so you do have to be careful with that. You know, but that's, it's really not a consistent land use pattern, is what I'm looking at, so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
No, sir.
Mr. President, Wes, what does fall within the light industrial?
I'm sorry?
What does fall within the zoning, like, what are some types of businesses?
Oh, gosh, there's a lot of.
I know we don't get to, we don't get to, like, junkyard stores.
Manufacturing of certain things, there's a lot of impactful type land uses that fall under light industrial, as well as the way the zoning ordinance works, if it's light industrial, you can also have C-three type uses, central business, commercial, or other commercial type businesses too, that would fall under there, so. It opens it up for a lot.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
We're gonna do a roll call vote. So, the, the, vote is to, is, there's a motion to deny, so a yes would be deny.
Yes, there's no.
Yeah.
It's a good thing Algie isn't here tonight.
So, a yes vote is to deny. So, what?
Reverse.
Reverse roll call, please.
Mr. Stelling?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Markentale?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Gilery?
Yes.
Ms. Eason?
Yes.
Mr. Burley?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Barti?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Yes.
Mr. Abshire?
Yes.
The vote is fourteen in favor and zero against, therefore, the motion to deny carries.
Item 2D. Adopt ordinances rescinding the following ordinances with respect to adjudicated properties, approving the readadvertisement of said properties. One, ordinance number seventy-seven fifty, eleven oh three Fourteenth Street, Lake Charles. Two, ordinance number seventy-seven fifty-two, three hundred block of North Fraser Street, De Quincey. Number three, ordinance number seventy-nine sixty-seven, ninety-nine percent interest in sixteen twenty-one Ninth Street in Lake Charles. And four, ordinance number seventy-nine sixty-eight, one percent interest in sixteen twenty-one Ninth Street, Lake Charles.
Motion on all bullets.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Quinn and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any question? Any discussion? Item carries. 2E, adopting ordinance rescinding ordinance number seventy-four sixty-four, which ordered demolition of one house and one accessory building located at sixty-four fifty-six San Diego Street in Lake Charles. I got a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Stelling. Any questions? Any discussion? Mr. Barti.
Man, I just have one word to say on this one, and that is finally. Yes, trust me. Well, you can have it.
I'll take it now that we got this taken.
That item carries. 2F, adopting ordinance authorizing the condemnation, demolition, and removal of one manufactured home located at four eighteen Maude Road, Moss Bluff.
Move to condemn, move in thirty days.
I got a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any questions? Any discussion? Item carries. 2G, adopt a resolution accepting Holbrook Acres, Part Two subdivision, located off Dun Ferry Road in Ward Six. I got a motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Burley. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. 2H, authorize the Director of the Division of Planning and Development to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on March sixth, twenty-twenty-five, as to why the structures on the properties, as stipulated, should not be condemned. Number one, twelve ninety East Likety Road, Moss Bluff. Second. Number two, one forty-eight Moss Lane, Moss Bluff. Number three, twenty-two thirty-six Tuna Lane, Lake Charles. Four, twenty-four fifty-five Quince Michael Lane, Lake Charles. Five, fifty-four ten Eighth Avenue, Lake Charles. Six, twenty-one ninety-eight Claude A. Bear Road, Le Blue Settlement. Seven, one thirty Florida Circle, Lake Charles. Number eight, seventy-six oh one Highway fourteen east, Hayes. Number nine, eight forty-one Highway one oh nine South Starks. Number ten, nine fifty-one Greenmore Road, Starks. Number eleven, one sixty-seven Rip Henigan Road, De Quincey. Number twelve, two eighty-nine Royer Loop, Sulphur. Thirteen, fifteen oh two Unis Street, Sulphur. Fourteen, sixteen twenty-two Unis Street, Sulphur. Fifteen, two twenty-one Chili Westland Road, Carless. Sixteen, twenty-one ten Huey Miller Road, Sulphur. Seventeen, twenty-four seventy-three West Houston River Road, Sulphur. Eighteen, fifteen forty-two Halverson Road, Carless. Nineteen, eight forty-seven Ravier Road, Sulphur. And number twenty, thirty-one fourteen Broussard Road, Sulphur. I had a motion on all bullets by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. Code enforcement, you guys have been working overtime. All right, item 3A.
Move on 3A.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Got a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? Any discussion? Item carries. 3B, approve the General Insurance Committee's report dated January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Insurance Committee of the Police Jury met at four forty-five PM today, January the thirtieth. Committee received a report from staff with reference to twenty-twenty-five insurance policies and recommends their approval and execution of all documents related thereto, excess workers' compensation, and maritime employee liability, employers' liability, auto protection and indemnity, and public entity management liability, crime liability, property equipment breakdown, terrorism, pollution, and inland marine, aviation, medical professional liability, and cyber liability. It would be the end of my report, except for the fact they saved us so much money, and I want to make sure everybody understands that, over a million dollars in reduced premium by the committee that's put together by the Risk Management Department, the Finance Department, and on and on and on. This is unheard of, savings of, I don't know, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand dollars is unusual. A million dollars? It's outstanding. We should be standing applauding these people, because the budget will impact that, needless to say. Kelly was looking at a new car this afternoon. Outstanding. That is the end of my report, Mr. President, and my move is recommended by the committee.
Move to accept report.
Got a motion to accept, oh, Mr. Andrew Pont?
No, just to add to that, for the committee when we met, that was a twenty-four point two percent decrease, savings for this parish. I did ask from the committee, the staff, that I think there should be a press release to that effect, but that kind of savings of over a million dollars, that's a great message to tell. And when you look at IT, the cyber, had like a twenty or eighteen percent, somewhere in that range, decrease. And with all the cyber attacks that's going across, it speaks well for our IT department, it speaks well for the entire department itself, of that kind of savings, and the buildings, that they stressed the point of our buildings on how they hardened, and all the criteria that went in, it was very impressive. So, I think it's a good story to tell.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont. Any further discussion? That item carries. 3C, adopt a resolution ratifying a local government proclamation of state of emergency, signed by President Barris on January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, due to extreme weather conditions. I've got a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Markentale.
Yes.
Any questions? Any discussion? Item carries. 3D, item, excuse me. Adopt a resolution approving a right-of-way use agreement between the police jury and Vexis Fiber LLC for fiber optic infrastructure installation within the unincorporated areas of the parish. I've got a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Ms. Eason. Any questions? Mr. Burley.
Do we know the areas that they're wanting this right-of-way? Because we still have a lot of areas in my district and north of my district, north of Sulphur, west of Westlake, all the way to De Quincey, that's still lacking in that surface, big time.
Well, Mr. Burley, this is, this is an agreement to utilize the right-of-way in the unincorporated areas, where they're going to go. But we do have Representative Vexis here, if you'd like to ask him, he may or may not But we do have Representative Vexis here, if you'd like to ask him, he may or may not know. Uh, it's Ryan Taylor with Vexis is here.
You'll please come to the podium, huh?
Good evening.
State's name and address and position, too.
All right, Ryan Taylor, I actually reside in Tupac, Louisiana, North Louisiana. I'm the Project Director, Construction Director, and Fiber Network Overseer for the state of Louisiana for Vexis Fiber. Right now, what we're trying to do is build from the south side of city limits, Lake Charles, down past Ham Reed Road, I cannot remember the exact route I'm going down to, but down there at the moment is where we're trying. We are moving over to Sulphur. I plan on starting at Sulphur inside city limits next week, starting to build there. And that will kind of lead me more into that northern, uh, north of Sulphur, Westlake area to, uh, hopefully expand and keep building for everybody here.
Please keep trying to go north all the way to De Quincey.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to build as much as they'll let me do. As long as I can get it in Calhoun Pass, we're going.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, uh, this agreement has, has been put in place as kind of a model. This, the, Vexis was the first one. We expect other companies to come, and hopefully we'll get to all of the unincorporated areas.
We should jump in there.
Great news.
Mr. President, um, I, I have reached out to, uh, the engineering and they reached out to Sam as well, uh, about this, not necessarily for Vexis Fiber, but about this right-of-way use agreement. I've seen, uh, a lot of, uh, cable left in a lot of the roadside ditches and, and, and I asked the staff, uh, to kind of beef up this agreement as best they could, or at least to, to, uh, talk about, uh, ways that we can put some, some fire, I guess, to the, to the contractors that are out there about getting some of that out of there. Uh, it's not, it's gonna fall on public works, it's gonna fall on litter abatement, and I don't think that's the way it should be. So, uh, just want to put that on the record that we, we, we did reach out to staff and Mr. Gab, and, and they believe there is enough in that agreement to, uh, to keep that from happening. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Item three E. Oh. So I got a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Ms., Ms. Eason. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. Three E, action on bids received by Peterson and Peterson Auctions on behalf of the Police Jury for the sale and removal of one house with its contents located at thirty-two ten Kirkman Street, Lake Charles. I got a motion by Mr. Quinn and a second by Ms. Eason. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Who wants this question about this poor house that we can't give away? What, what?
It's a nice house.
You get two bids, how did they both withdraw? Like, what went south on this deal?
You're looking at me? You're gonna take it?
Oh, sure, anybody.
Um, I, just the experience that I've seen, it's just hard to find anybody to come take a house from us.
To move it?
Yeah, to be moved. Um, we've had this problem before. The market ain't there. Go ahead.
Now, on this one, Mr. Landry, I believe one of the, at least one of them thought that it came with the land.
Price should have indicated that.
So when they found out it was that, to move the house, they withdrew their bid.
And when we reached out to the second bidder, they were unresponsive.
Oh, wow. I mean, they, honestly, it probably cost as much to move the house as what the house is worth. Yeah. It's, it's a shame, but, oh, thank you, Mr. President.
And Ms. Landry?
I have a question. So what happens in that case when we need the house removed, but we can't find it?
We care in the day.
In this case, that's what we're asking you to do, is that there, uh, we, and we do try. Obviously, with any kind of property we have, by law, we, we're, we're not able to give away property or, or just discard it. But we've had so many efforts and tried and tried, you can't hold up what we're doing. So you have to move on. And unfortunately, in this case, it's just demolish and move on.
Is that it? So, that item carries. Four A.
Move on four A.
Adopt resolution approving a professional engineering contract for the I-ten North Frontage Road Phase Two planning study. I got a motion by Mr. Bowers and a second by Mr. Burley. Any question? Any objection? That item carries. Four B, adopt resolution approving the, an act of donation of a temporary construction servitude agreement for the L.I.B. Orleans Drainage Project. I got a motion by Mr. Quinn and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any question? Any discussion? Item carries. Four C, adopt resolution approving the following agreements for the East Calves Parish Consolidated Waterworks Project. Number one, permanent utilities servitude with temporary construction servitude agreement. Number two, permanent public facility servitude agreement. Three, permanent public facility servitude and temporary construction servitude agreement. I've got a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Smith. Uh, any question? Any discussion? That item carries. Four D, adopt a resolution approving an act of donation agreement for roadway improvements at the intersection of Highway three ninety-seven and East Appaloosa Street. I've got a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any question? Any discussion? That item carries. Four E, adopt and ordinance approving the purchase of property located at twelve twenty-two Pine Hill Road, Lake Charles through funding received from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. I've got a motion by Ms. Eason and a second by Mr. Bowers. Any questions? Any discussion? That item carries. Five A, approve payment of all current invoices and advised regarding. Motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discuss, any questions? Discussion? Item carries. Five B, action on bids for herbicide and weed control chemicals. Staff recommends the bids of Helena Agri Enterprises LLC, Heritage Landscape Supply Group Incorporated, Nutrien Ag Solutions Incorporated, Orion Solutions LLC, and Red River Specialties LLC be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Bowers. Any question? Any discussion?
Move to go to executive.
That item carries.